I'm not sitting down.
I don't blame you.
Time is six o'clock. I call the meeting of the Otoka City Council to order. All rise as we do the pledge allegiance and the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good Lord, we thank you, God, that for another day that we get to be here. And I just thank you, God, that that we live in this country where we are free to have all the freedom we have, God. I just, God, I just pray that as we go through this meeting, that you would just give us the wisdom and to do the best for our city. And God, I just pray, pray for Erica and her baby, that they continue to do, do well and get better. And I just pray these things in your son's name. Amen.
Again, welcome to everyone this evening. This time with the clerk call roll, please.
Ms. McGee here. Mr. Sherrill.
Here.
Ms. Poe, Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Kathy.
Here. This is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the council at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January 2nd, 2024.
I recommend approving.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting, regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Mr. Delay, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My report's on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
Bunch next month, won't you?
Uh, yes.
I recommend approving.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Be sure and tell all the city staff, thank you very much for working in these conditions, keeping everything running. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank y'all. I appreciate it. They really struggle sometimes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the city of Otoka for the month of December 2023.
Those are all on attachment number three. Anyone has any questions?
I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the 2023 budget adjustments for the general fund.
Those are on attachment number four, if anyone has any questions.
Why do we have to do the, why do we get to do the differences or what happened with the amendments?
We do them every year. It just brings everything back into balance.
Okay, and that's how we're doing with all of these?
Yeah, we had projections before the end of the year. Now that we've settled the end of the year, now we come back and make these adjustments.
Then we come back.
We come back and we arrange everything and get the budget back into balance.
That way, everything balances.
Sounds good.
Starts out as a projection at the beginning of the year, and then, of course, your actual figures, you know, come into play at the end of the year.
Okay. I recommend approving.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion and/or action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number 2024-02 to amend the general fund budget for fiscal year 2023.
That resolution applies to number four.
I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number six, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the 2023 budget adjustments for capital improvements.
This is the same thing, except this time it's capital improvement.
I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number seven, discussion and/or action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number 2024-03 to amend the capital improvements budget for fiscal year 2023.
I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number eight, discussion and/or action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number 2020, 2024-07, approving and authorizing the declaration of a trust for the Otoka Municipal Golf Course Authority.
This is just a resolution accepting the beneficial interests of the golf course trust, sets out the purpose and your findings with regards to the need of having the golf course, course, course trust, and kind of the final leg of getting that wrapped up.
When will their meetings start?
They have a meeting on Thursday at five o'clock.
And when will we, on the council, will we do their meetings every?
Their meetings will normally take place at five o'clock on council nights, but we had an issue with the agenda this week, so we will have this one on Thursday.
But other than that, they will align with council meeting now?
With the council meetings.
Yeah, they'll meet once a month, but yes.
Okay. Okay, I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number nine, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting authorization for the mayor to sign assurance agreement with USDA for the police fleet upgrade project.
This is the next step in part of the grant we're applying for to help pay for the two units we're ordering for the police department to share for USDA.
I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number 10, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting authorization for the mayor to sign assurance agreement with USDA for capital improvements fleet upgrade project.
This is similar to the previous one, is the same thing, the next step to apply for grant to help pay for the two pickup trucks that we'd already approved to purchase.
Okay, and says the grant writing for services, the fee is 25,000?
That's a several one.
Oh, that's about 10,000.
This is number 10.
There was two. There was no, item number nine was for the police fleet upgrade project, and this is for capital improvements fleet upgrade project.
Okay. I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number 11, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting authorization for the mayor to sign the notice of public hearing and intent to file for application for physical assistance through USDA for the, excuse me?
Financial. I think you said fiscal.
I'm sorry. For financial assistance through USDA for water treatment plant improvement project.
This is for that grant that we're applying for through USDA for the water treatment plant.
I recommend approving.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number 12, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting authorization for the mayor to sign a notice of public hearing and intent to file an application for financial assistance through USDA for wastewater treatment plant improvement project.
This is for the grant that we're applying for through USDA for the wastewater treatment plant.
Recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number 13, discussion and/or action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number 2024-08, supporting the nomination of city manager Danny Delay to serve as district four appointee on the board of directors for the Oklahoma Municipal League.
This is just to support me to apply for that. It's not that I would automatically get it. This position has been held by the ADA city manager for the last several years, and he recently retired, and it came open. So I thought, well, why not Otoka have somebody to represent this district for a change?
They used to have meetings like every year, but I don't think I've been to one.
Yeah, they, they still have a yearly conference that I, that I go to. So I inquired a little bit about this, and they have meetings once a month in Oklahoma City to go over different things that they want to present to the Capitol as far as, you know, different things that, that would be good for municipalities and stuff. So anyway, I just thought it'd be kind of neat to have somebody from Otoka there for, for once. We've never had any representation, so.
Vaguely important to have real Oklahoma represented.
It's nice to be nominated even. I recommend approving.
Have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number 14, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the city of Otoka to hire Carver to assist with grant writing services for the raised discretionary, for the raised discretionary grant for the Sixth Street and Bridge project.
I think this is the one you were talking about. This is for the Sixth Street project to include upgrading the street and putting in a new bridge over there. I've been talking to this, Brandon Wall had first put me talking to this group because he is pretty much tied up with water and wastewater type projects. So I've been talking to Carver Engineering, and anyway, further went to discussion of what it would take to, to get this project done. And the estimate is between three and four million for the total project, and we need help in doing that. And the best grant we can come across is a raise grant, and it's something that you need somebody that really understands that process a lot better than I do to write that grant.
Very in-depth.
Yes. It's got several steps and everything else, and so had a conference call with them the other day, talked to the grant writers. She went over the things that she would do and everything, and she seems pretty confident, I guess as confident as you can be. You never know when you apply for grants. It's, it's never a done deal, of course. But I personally think it's worth the gamble of hiring someone like that if you in fact would get, you'd be getting, if she got the grant approved for us, would get somewhere between 80 and 90% of it would be what they would approve, and then we'd have to come up with the difference. But we'd have a new bridge over there, we'd have sidewalks over there, we'd have three lane from the highway to the, to the school there, to the bridge, I guess, and then it would be redone and straightened from there up to Weston.
How long did you say would the process would take? Did you get the same?
I think it would probably be, the time we did all this would be next year, wouldn't it?
It'd be a multi-year project.
So we're talking spread out over, you know, yeah, two, three years total, probably. But it'd probably take, you'd probably apply now to get a grant for next year, is the way I understood it.
I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number 15, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the city of Otoka to enter into a remote service management agreement with Mobile Communications America. Mr. Mullins, is this one you, sir?
Yes, sir. The, what it is, it's an agreement for the storm siren computer that we have out there at the ELC. What this computer does, it monitors the storm sirens to when we'll set off the sirens and do test mode on them three times a week. So we were supposed, we got the first year free. We've had it for just short of two years, so we've had a leeway there. Then the contract come up, and we went to do some negotiating on fixing, some adding the new protocols in it. The contract come up, but we didn't have the contract. So this is a contract we, I talked to Johnny. We have to bring it before y'all to get approval before we go any further, so.
So this was supposed to have been done after year one?
It should have been done in March of last year, so.
And the cost is $1,800?
Yeah, it's going to be 1,800 a year that we did, to do it. They, they kind of gave up, and they started the terms back in November.
Do we have to pay the pass?
No. They said from November to November of '24, while they're going to do this one for us.
Okay, I recommend approving.
Have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number 16, discussion and/or action on request of 21MM Solutions LLC for annexation of the property located in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 1 Township 2 South, Range 11 East, into the corporate limits of the city of Otoka, and directing notice to a public hearing as required by law.
This is for the tract of land that's immediately north of the power station, power substation here north of town on 69 Highway. The substation and subsequent tract to the north of that, the substation is in the city of Otoka limits, but the tract to the north of that is not, and we are needing to get that annexed into the city. This is probably less than an acre of land, but due to the arrangements with 21MM, we need to get that done, so.
I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Remind me, what is, what is?
Data center.
Okay, all right.
The power for the data center has to be in the ceiling. Okay, council, any council comments? Go ahead, motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
We move into our mix, next meeting of the evening. The Otoka Municipal Authority, would you call roll, please?
Ms. Poe, Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for staying with us. This is the time for public comments. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January 2nd, 2024.
I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, or two, man, I can't count. Sorry. Discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Otoka Municipal Authority for the month of December 2023.
Those are on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
I recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion in action regarding approving or rejecting the 2023 budget adjustments for the Otoka Municipal Authority.
These are same as the other two, except this one pertains to the AMA.
Recommend approving.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion in action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number 2024-04 to amend the Otoka Municipal Authority budget for fiscal year 2023.
I recommend approving.
Have a motion is second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Any trustee comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Either way, we got a motion in second somehow. Roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Next meeting of the evening, the Otoka City Industrial Development Authority, would you call roll, please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. Poe? Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. And this is the public comment time of the meeting. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of January 2nd, 2024.
I recommend approving.
Have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Turner, Ms. McGee?
Yes.
And Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the economic development director's report. Good evening, the servant.
Good evening. Normally, this meeting is when I would present a recap of the previous year. I have been hyper-focused on two projects, and so I will be giving that recap at the first meeting in February. I did have a citizen that reached out about opening the community building to the public. When we're there, it's open, but he did not know the need, and I referred him to the churches, and he said that it was mainly for during the day, and I said, by the time they got out there, they're going to be frozen, but I believe we're going to, I don't think he identified a need for people that warranted opening the community center. I did tell him that I would bring it to the board and let you know that somebody has requested this. I currently do not see the need for staffing something out there when we've got other organizations that are doing that currently.
Travis, don't you have a backup plan for if areas are out without power, or so we have that covered if, I mean, I think you're talking, you're talking individually, but I don't think we can, I mean, that'd be tough to, you know, to do that for one, I mean, we, I think there's other avenues to get there without us having to have the community center.
Is this person homeless or something?
No.
But I know Travis has done that in the past. If there's an area that goes out, doesn't have power and it's freezing, he has areas, that places that will open up for our town, or even the county. It's not just the town.
Is it posted somewhere?
Well, it's just if needed. I mean, it's kind of, the church is one of them, the family life center is one of them, and there's others that he had set up before that.
So there's certain emergency centers?
We were ready for a freeze, if a freeze came and the big areas were without, he has places for people to go.
So emergency management is the entity that's, that's got the plans? Okay. So that is, that is? So that is, that is pretty much my report for this meeting, and we have a lot going on.
Very good.
All right, I, I recommend approving. Thank you, Carol.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority for the month of December, 2023. Excuse me. Any questions on them?
No, I don't have any. Recommend approving.
Second.
Motion, a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and action regarding approving or rejecting the 2023 budget adjustments for the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion and action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number 2024-05 to amend the Etoka City Industrial Development Authority's budget for fiscal year 2023.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. As we move down, is there any trustee comments? Do I hear motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Had to learn his lesson, man.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Move into our next meeting of the evening, the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Poe? Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. Again, thank you for staying with us. This is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none. We'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of December 18th, 2023.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the sports complex manager's report.
So right now, we're in?
Dead, dead grass and it's cold, right?
Everything's frozen.
Yeah.
But, uh, Destry is working hard on the league. He's getting ready to open registration. We're anticipating an even larger number than last year. I do not remember the total number of teams. All I am just totally flabbergasted by was 32 T-ball teams. Uh, that's a lot of first-time parents and.
And grandparents.
And grandparents.
On my first time.
And it was, it's, it's a lot of fun, but that, that's a lot of work, and so I really appreciate Destry on that, and I appreciate Curtis for keeping the complex in such pristine condition. And, uh, but anyway, uh.
Isn't that normally April or so when you sign up?
Uh, yes, but last year, everybody really pushed for earlier registration because they want, they only had one or two weeks to practice before games start, started. So this year.
They're starting in January. They're going to get it.
Well, I'm telling you, that way then in March, um, they can start practicing, and March and league will start first of April.
Very good.
So it'll give them a little bit more time to form, you know, form their teams and learn which direction to run.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's so cute. Yeah, I saw at the ballgame the other day, Destry had the little dribblers. Uh, that was the neatest little thing. Uh, those little kids were really proficient with the basketball. I was like, hey, and they're little.
He's a very good coach, and he, and what is great is parents are already volunteering.
They look up without looking at the ball. I'm like, oh, okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting the payment of purchase orders for the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority for the month of December, 2023.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number four, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the 2023 budget adjustments for the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Thank you. Motion, a second roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Item number five, discussion and/or action regarding adopting or rejecting resolution number 2024-06 to amend the Etoka Industrial Facilities Authority budget for fiscal year 2023.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. So any trustee comments? Do I hear motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. Okay, let's move into our last meeting of the evening, the Etoka City Airport Authority Trust, would you call roll, please?
Ms. Poe? Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here. Again, this is the public comment time. If there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none. We'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of December 18th, 2023.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Motion, a second roll call, please.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes. So we move down. Is there any trustee comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Have a motion, a second. We are adjourned for the evening. Thank you all for coming. Oh, sorry, I got a, and I'm, I'm trying to get her on the road so she goes. Roll call.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes, all right.
Thank you. I will send pigs.